This meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, will you call the roll, please?
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhurt.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Will everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a set of minutes from our meeting of May 12th to approve. Any additions or corrections? Okay, we need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
To approve the minutes. Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhurt.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
And an announcement for everyone's information. Before our next meeting on June 9th, we will have a brief public hearing prior to the meeting for a community development block grant. Okay, at this time, we'll have our first public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare, or excuse me, anything to say pertaining to a legislative item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to observe our five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of council. Thank you for your time. I'm Reverend Ginger Marshall. I live in terraces on North Ridge and have been here for over a decade. Shortly, you're going to be considering Resolution 2024-14, recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning plus Pride Month. I urge and ask you to vote yes on this resolution. My wife and I moved to Brooklyn over a decade ago. We visited a few times as we were considering moving here from the Cadell neighborhood. A visibly lesbian couple, we wanted to make sure it was reasonably safe or at least not openly hostile. We felt okay, though it did seem like we might be the lone queers living in the city. After we move in, we did occasionally see other same-sex couples and saw some cars with pride stickers that seemed to be around regularly. Most of our socializing is with folks in other areas, so we didn't make a lot of connection. We still felt somewhat isolated in an impersonal suburb. But Brooklyn was a nice place to live, so, you know, that's fine. Then, Brooklyn saw a wave of pride flag vandalism and the desecration of the Jewish cemetery on Ridge. We honestly began to wonder if these were isolated events by individual bad actors, or if the two were connected, or if Brooklyn was, in general, becoming hostile. To date, I understand that two minors were arrested for vandalizing one home. Meanwhile, multiple other attacks were reported. I understand up to as many as 27 were reported to the police. Many of those were documented on Ring or other security cameras. Somehow, none of those perpetrators have been apprehended for what are arguably hate crimes and potential precursors to escalated violence. LGBTQ+ residents are left with fear and questions. And citizens still don't have answers or arrests for the antisemitic vandalism of the cemetery. And we are wondering who is next? What other groups in Brooklyn may be targeted? Bluntly, teens committing violent acts against minority groups does not happen in a vacuum. It is learned, justified, even implicitly approved by adults around them, by values they are taught, by rhetoric they are steeped in. We can come up with various excuses to not support this resolution, sending the message that we, as a city, do not care about welcoming people, about safety, and about community. Or we can draw a line. We're not going to fix this problem here tonight. I know that. A city council resolution is not a magic solution. It is, however, a declaration that we, as a community, take a stand. All of our neighbors are welcome. No one should be mistreated. I'm asking you to take a stand for our community and support this resolution and vote yes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Pierce. I am a newer resident, 4074 Ridge Road. I currently serve as the Vice President of Brooklyn Area Pride. And this evening, I speak to all as a resident and in reference to the resolution being proposed by Councilman Coyle. A few years ago, I started spending a decent amount of time here in Brooklyn with my close friends. In that time, I got to know Brooklyn as a city. I came to realize that the city is a diverse blend of people from various cultures and backgrounds, all living together and calling it home. More specifically, the LGBTQ+, sorry, plus community has a sizable presence here in Brooklyn, a place that is safe for everyone. And it is because of that, and with a little encouragement from my best friend, that I decided to move here. As we all know, not very long ago, several residents of our city, both those who proudly express their identities and their allies, had been victims of vandalism, immature and malicious acts of hate and intolerance, acts that unfortunately are becoming more common around our great state. However, I believe, as does a majority of Brooklyn residents, both allies and LGBTQ+ members of our community, that these bad actors do not represent the city's ideals. The resolution being introduced this evening is a reminder that such intolerance is, in fact, not who we are as a city, but rather a welcoming, accepting, and nurturing community that sees its strength in diversity and inclusion. Each of you sitting up there care deeply about this city. Otherwise, you would not be where you are. As you all vote on this resolution, please consider how each of you will set the tone for a more inclusive community and show that we are all truly moving forward together. Thank you.
James Brown, 4560 Bentwood Drive. I've lived in Brooklyn a long time.
Could you pull the mic just a little bit closer? And could you repeat?
All right. James Brown, 4560 Bentwood Drive. I've lived in Brooklyn for over 15 years. It's a nice place, and I'm on the Belonging Commission. And we're working hard to make sure everyone feels welcome, you know, in this town. I like the idea of the town, the way it was, Brooklyn, Ohio. I liked it. I still love it. It's still nice. You're not in Cleveland, and you're not in Parma. You're in between. You've got your own police force, an old fire department. You know, it's beautiful, you know. But still, every, anytime you see anything, like, bad happen, it's like, oh, no, what's happening to my town? It's falling apart, you know? You think, you think the worst, you know? And then later on, it, ah, it's not so bad. Every, every town has its problems, you know? But back to this issue with the lesbian pride. A lot of my friends, they were saying they didn't like the way it was going, you know, when I told them I voted for it, and they, they were not happy. Yeah, the religious ones, I know a woman, she's, just will not stand it. She kind of disowned me, you know? It's like, I thought it would be, oh, okay, you know? No, she wasn't happy. It seems like people of religious convictions will find it hard to swallow, you know? And that's my opinion, you know? It just, I, you know, get along with everybody. That's why I'm on the Belonging Commission. I want to help people, you know? I want to help the elderly especially, because they don't have anything. They feel alone, isolated when they get old. They can't get up and down, in and out. It's hard for them to get around. And then they, and when they're not talking to people, they zone out. They become, it's like falling into dementia, you know? But what I want to say is, you know, it's just, it's nice that we have, we could recognize the lesbian and gay pride, but have it like, I see, it's one month after, it's like, for the whole month, there's, yeah. It's like, people don't like that. They say one day is cool, and, and not the, and the pride flag, it's just too much, you know? A lot of people find it, you know, it's like flying stars and bars, you know, for black people. They just don't like it, you know? It seems divisive, but that's my say. I didn't bring a speech. I didn't prepare it. Yeah, all right.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Mark McLoney. My pronouns are he and him. I'm actually a resident of Cleveland, but I'm here in support of this resolution. I think it's important.
Excuse me, could you please state your address for the record? Thanks.
Sure. 3052 West Boulevard, Cleveland, Ohio. You all do love the city, I know, because you are sitting here in front of us right now and listening to all this. As a physician, though, I would like to say how much it would mean to the LGBTQ+ community to make this resolution possible. It, it will show that the city has their, has their back and has support for them. It can really help with feelings of depression and, and even suicide issues that can be quite heavy. In addition to being a medical doctor, I'm also, I also have my master's in human genetics, and I can assure you, there are more than two genders. I did my specialty in genetics, in especially the area of Down syndrome. So if anyone has any questions or concerns or issues that they'd like to address, I make myself available for you. And please vote yes for this resolution. I think it'll mean a great deal to you citizens.
Does anyone else have anything to say relating to legislative items on our agenda? Okay. We'll now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. And I'll begin with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening at 6:00 PM and recommended council adopt the following pieces of legislation. Ordinance 2025-10, which is on third reading, up for third reading and adoption, establishing the unclassified part-time position of administrative assistant in the Service Department. Under New Business, Resolution 2025-13, which is on first reading this evening, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2026. This is something we do every year. We have to submit the tax budget to the county. Basically, this justifies the taxes we're collecting. There is no change in the property taxes that we will be collecting. It will remain at 5.9 mils. And it is worth mentioning that we are still under the 10 mils of inside millage that a city can levy without a vote of the people. So this is unusual, and it's a good thing. Also on first reading is Ordinance 2025-1, amending Exhibit 8 of Ordinance 2024-28, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time and administrative employees, non-bargaining unit of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is going to raise the upper limit for our housing manager position to 33.791, and this is to accommodate a 2.5% increase that is anticipated coming up. And we did receive a report from our finance director, which he will recap when it's time for the director's reports. The Committee of the Whole met at 6:15 this evening. And in addition to the legislation I just read that we also addressed in the Committee of the Whole from the Finance Committee, we addressed the following. The first is Resolution 2025-11, which is on second reading with a request to suspend the rules. And this is because the County Solid Waste District is looking for all the cities to get their resolutions of support in. And this is to adopt the Solid Waste Management Plan for the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Management District. Ordinance 2025-11, which is on second reading, amending and adding sections within Chapter 505 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to update the city regulations relating to animals. Our animal control officer and our law director worked on this. It, it does only address some of the chapters within the animal regulations. And basically, there's some cleanup of some language, some improvements to the section on animal abuse and cruelty, limiting of 10 domestic animals in a household unless some are fish or unless there's a litter of animals that are under six months old that causes the household to exceed the 10. Adding electronic means of notifying the public about impounded animals, banning vicious dogs from our parks, and adding some legislation on dog parks since we are in the process of building a dog park. There are some questions for our animal control officer, and she was expecting to be here this evening, but she got tied up with something in Parma Heights because we do share services with Parma Heights. So the Committee of the Whole recommended that we defer this until our June 9th meeting, when she will be able to attend. And so it'll be on second reading then. Resolution 2025-14, the, on first reading with a request to suspend the rules because of the timeliness, recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning and plus LGBTQ+ Pride Month and declaring an emergency. Finally, Ordinance 2025-13, which is on first reading, amending Section 1519.04, possession or sale or discharge prohibited, exceptions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn pertaining to fireworks and declaring an emergency. The reason for the emergency adoption is so that it will be in effect prior to the Fourth of July holiday. And, but this will still go on our docket for three readings. And basically, last year was the first year that we permitted the discharge of certain fireworks in the city only on the Fourth of July. And basically, this change says that if you set off the fireworks and you cause debris in your yard and your neighbor's yard, that you are responsible for cleaning up that debris in your yard. And also, if you have permission from your neighbor to also clean up the debris you caused in their yard. And that completes those two reports. Next, we'll move on to Public Safety and Environmental. Councilman Barowski.
I'm sorry, there's another important question.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
I didn't realize that was there.
Okay, next is Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Recreation Board meeting was held on May 19th. Topics discussed were the Brooklyn Memorial Day Parade, youth baseball and softball programs, new sliding entrance at the Senior Center to be installed in May and June of 2025. Senior Grants Cutting Program is underway with approximately 80 participants. Also discussed were the 2026 improvements to include a new parking lot and a possible fitness area. Spring soccer at Hurricane Alley was a success. Discussed fall setup. The Veterans Park Project is underway, completion by December 2025. Janitorium Project Update CMR, RFP, will be released soon. Dog Park Project is underway, expected complete in September, October. Summer swimming lessons for kids. Registration starts May 28th. Classes are for six weeks. Cost, residence $40, partnership $50, non-resident $55. For more information, please contact the Rec Center at www.brooklynrec.com. Recreation Department in Brooklyn City Schools Summer Soccer Camp, ages 5 through 12, will be held on June 9th and 10th. Rain date, June 11th. At the Hurricane Alley, soccer fields, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Cost, $30, $30 residents and $35 non-residents. Players should bring tennis shoes or cleats, shin guards, water, and soccer ball. Instruction will be provided by the varsity soccer coaching staff and players. Registration is open through May 31st at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn T-Birds T-Ball for boys and girls 3 to 4 years old and Rookie League Baseball, boys and girls 5 to 6 years old. Fridays, 5:30 to 6:30 PM and 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Starting June 13th through Ju-, July 25th at Veterans Memorial Park. Learn throwing, catching, batting, and more in a non-competitive environment. Players get a team t-shirt and cap. Parent participation encouraged, led by trained staff from Jump Start Sports. For, for more information, go to www.jumpstartssportsclevelandwest.com. Learn to skate. Summer sessions will be held on Fridays and Saturdays beginning June 13th through June, July 26th. Registration is now open. For more information, contact the Rec Center at www.brooklynrec.com. Semifinals and finals for the Senior Center Mine Challenge are this Wednesday, May 28th, Thursday, May 29th, at the Donna Smallwood Center in Parma. Good luck to all the Brooklyn participants. Senior Center will be hosting Open House and Vendor Day, Wednesday, May 28th, complimentary chair yoga at 9:00 AM. Local vendors, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. June activities at the Senior Center include June 4th Pizza and Movie, 1:00 PM. June 11th Bingo, 1:00 PM with Avenue. June 12th Barbecue Chicken, like Father's Day luncheon. Noon, cost $8, registration is open. June 18th Mystery Lunch, meet at the Senior Center at 11:30. Registration begins June 2nd. Cost $3 for bus, pay for your own meal. June 25th Bingo, 1:00 PM with Brooklyn Point. June 26th Soup and Sandwich Luncheon, noon. Cost $6, registration starts June 2nd. Rec Center Summer Hours, June 1st through August 31st. Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM. Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Recreation Board meetings are canceled for the months of June, July, and August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I do have one question. Do you know the type of vendors that are going to be at the Senior Center at that event?
Uh, no, but I can get back to you on it. I don't have time for you.
Thank you. Next is Domestic Relations Commission, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Brooklyn. Recently, the Commission met to discuss ideas regarding Brooklyn's Home Days later this fall, where we plan on setting up a table. At the event, we would be looking to connect in person with individuals seeking information regarding different types of abuse and the avenues on the importance of dealing with it with the help of literature and items to hand out with helpful information. We, the Commission, may have to schedule an extra meeting or two before the event to properly prepare for it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next is Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. The Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, June 4th, at 6:00 PM with one item on their agenda, a request for a preliminary site plan approval to open a Culvers at 5080 Tiedemann Road. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on May 15th to consider two items. The board voted no on a request to build a second garage to store classic cars at 4592 Sunset Oval. And the board also turned down a variance request from Panda Express to have a drive-through located in the front rather than located on the side or the rear of the property as per our current zoning laws. And the address for that is 10814 Brook Park Road. The next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be June 19th. And just a reminder that both the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals' agendas and meeting information is on Board Docs. So if you wanted to look closer at a site plan for, for anything that's coming up in Brooklyn, you can log into Board Docs, the public site, and see the information. That concludes my report.
Thank you. School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Mosley.
Thank you. Construction has started on the gymnasium, and the turf field began its replacement today. Just a reminder, the stadium and the track are closed. The schools and Metro Health have announced a partnership with each other. This will be so beneficial not only to our students and families, but the community as a whole. Metro Health will also be an integral part of the early learning center and preschool. Also, congratulations to the class of 2025 on graduation. That was on the 21st, I believe. And also to the, those young adults who graduated from Polaris. There was a special board meeting today, the 27th. I was not there. I was here. I will report back on that next meeting. But their next scheduled meeting is June 3rd in the Treasurer's Office at 6:15. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Connecting and Belonging Commission, Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Connecting and Belonging Commission met last Thursday, Tuesday, May 20th, or last Tuesday, May 20th. The Commission discussed a variety of ideas and entertained comments from the public. A few of those ideas and comments were potentially surveying residents to see what our current strengths and opportunities are, connecting with outside organizations such as the Cuyahoga County Office of the Public Defender, towards employment in Metro Health to ensure their services are accessible to our residents, offering different classes such as a women's self-defense class, and working with council to determine which commemorative months should be recognized moving forward. Again, these were just a few of the many ideas talked about. The next meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 17th, in the City Hall Community Room. The Commission is hoping to prioritize all their ideas at that time. As a reminder, these meetings are open to the public, and all are welcome to attend. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to reports of council. And this evening, we begin with Councilman Coyle.
Good evening again. Tonight, I, along with Council President Pucci and Councilwoman Grodick, will be introducing Resolution Number 2025-14, recognizing June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Celebrating and recognizing Pride Month is more than symbolic. It's a meaningful step towards ensuring that every resident in Brooklyn feels seen, valued, safe, and that they belong. Pride Month is a time to honor the courage, contributions, and experiences of the LGBTQ+ community and to affirm that our city council stands with those who have too often been overlooked and marginalized. Unfortunately, our community has witnessed firsthand why this recognition is still necessary. Just last summer, several homes in Brooklyn were vandalized and pride flags were stolen. A clear reminder that acts of intolerance and disrespect still occur, even here. That is why resolutions like this matter. They send a strong and unified message that disrespect and hate have no place in Brooklyn and that all residents deserve to live without fear of being targeted for who they are. In recent months, city council has taken steps to formally present recognitions and expressions of support on behalf of the entire body. We have supported and acknowledged important causes such as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and the People of Ukraine. In the past, we've also recognized Black History Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Motorcycle Safety Month, just to name a few. It is only fitting that we continue this practice and ensure that no one is left out as we strive to build a community where everyone is treated with fairness and respect. This resolution is a call for awareness, compassion, and continued care for one another. I'm proud to introduce it tonight and ask for support of my fellow council members to move it forward and move the city forward together. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Selhurt.
Thank you. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Probably the visual's going to be a little bit better than me talking, so you might enjoy it a little bit. Thank you to the 28th, 9th, and 10th graders that came out on May 15th, along with class advisors, Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Spuzzillo, and chaperones, Mrs. Shirzan and Mrs. Burr, for a community cleanup. They started at the school and went down Southwood to the cut-through. The majority went to Markord Park. A few went the other way for the rest of the walkway cut-through. Once done with Markord Park, they broke down into smaller groups and walked up several side streets to bid off and then proceeded on both sides of Bid Off to Knights Commons. The majority stayed there with a small group that went over to Brock Memorial Playground. That small group returned to Knights Commons covering the other side of Ridge Road. From Knights Commons, they proceeded north on Ridge, on both sides of Ridge, to Hurricane Alley and back to the school. They spent roughly about three hours out there that afternoon, from 12 to 3. The supplies, you see them wearing the orange or yellow vests, the pickers, the garbage bags, the buckets. That's all supplies that we get annually through a grant from Keep Ohio Beautiful. So we pay an annual fee of about $100. Another cleanup was scheduled with Brooklyn High School Football Team on Wednesday, May 21st, starting around 3:00 PM. There was a rain out for that day about 2:45. It was just raining buckets. That cleanup's going to get made up some other day, either still in this school year, the summer or next school year. On Saturday, June 7th at 9:00 AM behind the fire station on Memphis is the annual Big Creeks Connects cleanup. Starts at 9:00 AM and goes until somewhere between 11:00 and noon depending upon the number of volunteers and amount of litter that's back in the area behind the fire station. Please wear appropriate clothing for going into the woods and wet grounds with mud. Another cleanup that is being worked on is with the employees of PPG Industries. Keep Ohio Beautiful and Keep Brooklyn Beautiful for Friday morning yet to be determined in June. Details are still being worked on. Locations possibly that will be cleaning up are Tiedemann and I-480 and Ridge by I-4D and Ridge Sparks Square to Bit Off. Thank you to the Brooklyn FOP Lodge for a nice fun evening at their annual Wing Ding fundraiser that was attended by 160-plus people. $1,200 will be given to a family of Berea Officer Sergeant Ian Esposito who recently passed away. Another donation was made that evening to Brooklyn Cares and was accepted by Susie Marquess. With Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, we will be teaming up to some degree with Earthology that is run by Aaron Enavich. Some of our indoor class program materials are the same to have been used by Keep America Beautiful. Keep America Beautiful right now is starting up a more aggressive classroom material program before her stu... for what Aaron can use before her students go out for the second half of the day outdoors. Aaron runs a classroom that is partially indoors. For the first half of the day when it's dew and moist and everything, they have lunch and then they go out there and outdoors and actually apply what they learned that day. So this might be a really nice, good partnership with Aaron and Earthology. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Good evening, Brooklyn residents. First of all, I want to thank our visitors for coming out today. I know that council meetings might not be the most exciting thing to attend, but I do appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts. I want to start off by saying that I hope everybody had a great Memorial Weekend. I know that it's common to hear have a great Memorial Day, but not everybody realizes the meaning behind that. We had a speaker at the end of the parade yesterday, Colonel from the Air Force, and he said a lot of what I think about during Memorial Day. I was able to walk in the parade with the mayor, Councilman Borowski, Tansky and Seltzer and our families. And when I was listening to that speaker, he had mentioned that it memorializes those who sacrificed their lives so that we could have the freedoms that we do. And of course, my heart goes out to the people that sacrifice themselves, but there's a whole family and generation that's left behind. There's kids that grow up without moms or dads and just families are broken and they're typically pretty young families. So for all those families that have lost somebody, Yesterday Was For You. Your loved ones' sacrifice allows me to raise my young family and enjoy all the freedoms that I do. I will be forever grateful. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. Following Councilman Mosley, I want to say thank you to all those that helped to make the parade yesterday, as memorable as it always is. Again, we owe today, yesterday, every day that we breathe in the air of freedom to those of all backgrounds that gave up their last breath in the defense of it. To all the graduates from the city of Brooklyn, congratulations on all of your efforts and best of luck in all of your future endeavors. With Resolution 2025-14, I have no personal comments at the moment on it, but I will read a letter that was sent to me regarding the resolution. Again, these are their words, not mine. Councilman Member Borowski. I'm writing to express my gratitude for your longtime service to our community as a member of Brooklyn City Council. I have worked and retired in Brooklyn for 41 years and have lived here for 26. I have been a contributor, active citizen. I pastored and retired from the Cleveland Baptist Church and still attend the services there when I am not traveling. I understand a proclamation this coming Tuesday at the council meeting would endorse Pride Month. However, the city of Brooklyn should not be involved in this. As a resident of Brooklyn, I interact with my neighbors and find that most folks here are just ordinary working and retired people. They aren't flying flags for the LGBT+ community. Driving down our streets, you'll see the American flag flying from houses. We are, after all, all Americans. Proclamations like the one Tuesday creates unnecessary division in our city. LGBTQ+ individuals have decided to live a particular lifestyle, summerside in Brooklyn. It compromises, comprises about 2% or less of the population. Everyone deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. I'll sum it up shortly. I would like you to vote no on the proclamation being presented Tuesday at the council meeting. With Councilman Mosley, I want to say thank you for all of those that belong to this community for coming and speaking tonight. I'm sure that other council members still may have personal opinions to relay to residents and the rest of council, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I am not in support of Resolution Number 2025-14 as written. I will support any resolution that benefits all Brooklyn residents. I have seen so many elections growing more and more divisive and also by the letters and phone calls I receive from residents about these polarizing issues facing our community. Brooklyn City Council as a whole needs to pass resolutions as a neutral governing body as to include all people regardless of age, race, religion, gender identity, marital status or physical challenges. Any resolution put to city council members should not single out any one group of people as all voices should be heard and counted. I am committed to fostering any sense of belonging for all who live, work and visit our city. And for those reasons, I would support a Brooklyn for All resolutions, resolution if put forward. I supported at the end the Belonging Committee. Now, when that resolution, that legislation came forth, the first time it came forth, it was dead on arrival. I went to Coyle, my good friend Coyle down there, smile. I went to him and I says, let's work this out. It doesn't have to be this way, let's work it out. So it went back and forth, back and forth until we got something that everybody could live with. And I believe we can do the same thing with this resolution. I believe that nothing can't be resolved. Everybody has different opinions. Everybody has a way of life and I get it. But we have to come together. We cannot fight, we cannot hate, I get it. But we have to do it in a way to bring council together and to bring the residents together. And I think finding a resolution, Brooklyn for All, however we want to title it, would be more beneficial for everybody here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate all of Brooklyn's graduates and their families. As someone who raised two Brooklyn graduates, I know that it is a family effort and congratulations and welcome to the next chapter in your lives and continue to make all of us proud. I also would like to thank Councilman Coyle for bringing this resolution that we're discussing tonight up. It was mentioned in our earlier meeting that it would have been appropriate to have brought it up earlier so that it could have three readings, maybe, but sometimes we don't think that far ahead. And June is coming up and yes, June is not a surprise to any of us, neither is Pride Month. It's been a national movement for quite a few years and I think I read 56 if I read the resolution correctly. But probably what really stands out in my mind is the vandalism that happened here in Brooklyn last June. Some of you may remember that I was on a trip in Finland, so I was basically reading about the vandalism that was happening from Finland, reading on social media, reading our information from council and really feeling like I could not be very effective in being here during that time. So when Councilman Coyle brought this, I was very pleased to be a co-sponsor. I asked him if I could co-sponsor, followed up when I didn't, wasn't sure if I asked. He listened to any concerns I had about the resolution and I hope that we will pass it tonight. It's not meant to divide any community. It's simply meant to state that we recognize Pride Month, which is happening whether we pass the resolution or not. So I want to recognize Pride Month in our city as well as through our country. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things. First, I'd like to thank everyone who worked very hard to organize the parade and those who were able to participate. Congratulations to all of our graduates. We wish them all the best in this next chapter. Also, thanks to our students who participated in the cleanup, but I also want to recognize and thank Councilman Seltzer for organizing this. We appreciate your efforts and also the efforts of the students. I did attend the Connecting and Belonging Commission meeting last, I think it was last Thursday, and they have a portion at the end of their meeting where anyone from the public could either ask a question or make a suggestion. And I did share with them that it had come up on council when we were just getting the Commission organized, that the suggestion that we could have them look at the different observances, because if you look at, all you have to do is Google what the observances are and you either get a shortlist, a medium list or a relatively long list. And I thought it might be a good idea for them to look at what all these observances are and then make some recommendations to council as to what the Commission might feel would be appropriate for us to recognize as a community. Regarding the Big Creek Cleanup, Mr. Councilman Seltzer's already announced it, however, I do want to add that there are refreshments. There is pizza after the cleanup, so that's a little bit of an incentive there. And regarding Resolution 2025-14, I just wanted to share some thoughts on what I believe are reasons to support it. In addition, I do agree with what Councilwoman Grodick said as well. The first is affirming civil rights and equality. This aligns with American values because it upholds the foundational principles such as freedom, equality and justice for all. Demonstrating community support, it fosters a sense of belonging. LGBTQ residents and their families feel seen and supported by their local government. Supporting mental health and well-being prevents bullying and harassment. Public recognition helps build a more respectful and understanding culture. And then it's also though an educational opportunity because it raises awareness and understanding. Pride Month provides a chance for the community to learn about LGBTQ history and contributions. And that completes my report. We'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President. I first want to offer my condolences to the family of Aaron Bowler. Aaron was a graduate of Brooklyn High School, just a 35-year-old young man, dealt with tremendous health issues throughout his entire life and he passed away this past week. So my deepest condolences to his family who are longtime residents here in the city of Brooklyn. I want to officially welcome our new Brooklyn Clerk of Counsel, or our next Brooklyn Clerk of Counsel, I should say, Dana Schroeder. This is her first meeting, sitting there next to Mary Jo, as was announced a couple of weeks ago. Mary Jo will be retiring at the end of June and it will be sad to see her go, but we are very glad to have Dana on our team and so welcome officially to your first meeting. I wanted to thank everyone who was involved in the Brooklyn Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony yesterday. Jacob Bruzzi, Maria Magenti and Rachel Laskowski of the Brooklyn Recreation Center once again did an absolutely outstanding job arranging, organizing and running the parade and the ceremony. Also, a special thank you to Mr. Sullivan and the Brooklyn Hurricanes Marching Band for once again playing in the parade and the ceremony. And also, thank you to Mr. Verba and our wonderful service team for their outstanding work on Veterans Memorial Plaza, as well as ensuring that all the Hometown Hero banners were hung along the parade route. The parade was very well attended by both participants and observers. I also want to thank my fellow walkers in the parade that are sitting up here, Councilman Selhertz, Councilman Borowski, Tansky and Mosley. We had an absolutely beautiful day yesterday for the parade. I especially want to say thank you to all those who took the time, even after the parade, to take part in the remembrance ceremony at the stadium. It was in this ceremony that the true essence of Memorial Day was embodied, as we remembered more than 1 million men and women who sacrificed their lives for our freedoms. In a world that is so often focused on self, we remembered these men and women who set aside their own ambitions and their own self-interest so that we can live in freedom today. And as Mr. Mosley so aptly put it, as did their families. A special thank you to the many veterans that attended and participated in the ceremony and also to Lieutenant Colonel Brad Bort for offering the keynote address. Brooklyn every year does a wonderful job remembering and honoring our fallen heroes and was very honored to be a part of that parade and ceremony yesterday. A few updates of what's going on around town. The Ridge Road and I-480 off-ramps are set to begin that work next week. The westbound ramp will be closed June 2nd to August 5th. And then once that work is completed, they will jump over to the eastbound ramp from August 6th to October 2nd. The long-awaited Memphis Tiedemann Turn Lane project is finally underway. The project has been in the works for over two years. All the utilities have been relocated, the contractor's been mobilized, the construction work has been done and this project will run through pretty much the entire construction season. The eastern and western city entrances on Memphis Avenue, the contractor that is doing that project is already in the city, they're the same contractor that's doing the dog park and they are supposed to begin that work this week. We've discussed for quite a while now traffic calming on all the roads east of Ridge. We did receive three proposals back from the contractors. The low bid was from Specialized Construction, it did come in under bid, and a work will begin on that project in the coming weeks. Once we have more details, letters will be sent to the residents affected in that area. If you traveled from Lyndale into Brooklyn, or at least attempted to last weekend, you noticed that the road was closed eastbound on Memphis Avenue because there was a waterline break that happened directly under the bridge. On Friday, the city was able to hire a contractor and have the repairs made under that bridge. The repairs were completed very quickly and the bridge was reopened the next day. So many thanks to all those involved, especially to Mr. Henry, our city engineer, and of course, Mr. Verba, our service director. It's not very often that you have a major project like that done in just a couple of days, and so kudos to those men and their team for getting that done. The Veterans Memorial Park upgrade, the construction is well underway. They're making a lot of progress over there. All the old pavilion, the concrete's been removed, the sport court and the fencing has been removed, as well as some of the trees are gone, and so they're currently on schedule to have that done by the either year's end or in the early part of next year. The 2025 Streets Program work is taking place in Idlewood and Springcrest. Idlewood has had the intermediate asphalt poured and the finishing base repairs will take place this week. Springcrest still needs to have chip seal placed on that, but all of this work will be done ahead of schedule or on schedule by the end of June. And as was already mentioned, I want to say congratulations to all the graduates here in the city of Brooklyn. I was supposed to attend the graduation ceremony, but I accidentally double-booked myself, so I was not able to attend. But I did send a letter out to all the graduates of Brooklyn High School and wish you congratulations and Godspeed in whatever endeavors you have in the next stages of your life. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next are directors' reports, and this evening we have a director from our finance director, Raguz.
Just one item for me tonight, just general fund financial report for April. Overall revenues are 38% of the estimated amount, 8% more than prior year due to an increase in income tax revenue due to a net increase of one-time non-recurring revenue in the amount of $679,000. So pretty consistent what we've seen through the first quarter of the year. On the bottom half of the income statement, overall commitments are 38% of the estimated amount, 6% more than prior year. This 6% is due to timing of certain encumbrances, increase in dispatch costs and also additional expenses related to our land fund. On the income tax front, we did receive our distributions from Rita for May. Total distributions are just above $2.6 million, which is $74,000 more than May of 2024. Included in these payments are revenues that are classified as one-time non-recurring revenue. So excluding that revenue, overall, May of 2025 is $227,000 less than May of 2024. that are classified as one-time, non-recurring revenue. So excluding that revenue, overall, May of 2025 is $227,000 less than May of 2024. So we did receive a good amount of non-recurring revenue as part of the May distribution. As a refresher, on the pole renovation project going into this year, we had a budget amount for Phase 1 of the project of $14 million. Of that amount, we plan to take a debt issuance in the form of a note of $2,090,000. We did discuss back in January, and we're going to be proactive as far as setting aside non-recurring, one-time revenue related to income taxes. We're going to set that money aside to pay down or to offset this debt expenditure that we were planning on taking. So through the May distribution that I just referenced from Rita, we received about $2 million in this non-recurring, one-time revenue. Of that $2 million is $1.7 million is related to the general fund. You all know that we set aside 84% of the income tax revenue we received. We put that in the general fund. So of that $2 million, $1.7 million is related to the general fund. So that $1.7 million will offset the $2,090,000 for a new debt issuance amount of $390,000. We did discuss in Finance Committee that instead of issuing debt for $390,000, which is a very immaterial amount when you're talking about a $14 million project, and due to the high interest costs of issuing debt and also the cost of issuance in issuing debt, we will forego issuing this debt and instead pay it down with future one-time revenue or from the general fund reserves that we currently have. So we are not planning on taking out additional debt as far as this project is concerned. That concludes my report. Any questions from City Council?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Under request, we have a liquor permit. This is for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC. Does business as Chipotle Mexican Grill 5402. And this is, the address is 7320 North Cliff Avenue. So this is for the new Chipotle that is being built over at Ridge Park Square. And our police chief has no objections to this. So we're looking for a motion to take a position of no objection.
So moved.
Second. For a position of no objection, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Under legislation "Old Business", we have Ordinance 2025-10, which is on third reading and up for adoption, establishing the unclassified part-time position of administrative assistant in the service department. Any comments or questions? We need a motion to adopt, please.
So moved.
Second.
To adopt, Kathy Pucci.
No.
Stephen Coyle.
Upstain due to a family member at the service garage.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2025-11, which is on second reading with a request to suspend the rules to adopt the Solid Waste Management Plan for the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Management District. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-11, which is on second reading, amending and adding Sections Chapter 505 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to update the city's regulations relating to animals. And we need a motion to defer this to second reading at our June 9th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
To defer to the June 9th meeting, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Okay, now, under "New Business", we have Resolution 2025-13, which is on first reading, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2026. Resolution 2025-14 on first reading with a request to suspend the rules, recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning and plus LGBTQ-plus Pride Month, and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just want to touch base on some comments made by my fellow councilpeople during their reports. Mr. Tansky talked about an inclusion ordinance for all. And I just wanted, we had this very discussion over the last week, and we had talked about that it loses the educational opportunity when you do that, and it also minimizes the different groups. In the past, we have recognized different groups, even recently this year. So it's very disheartening to hear that you're not in support of this for the particular reasons that you spoke about. But it seems like it's singled out to LGBTQ-plus individuals, and that is not, not cool in my book. So it's, it's not simple. And then, Mr. Barowski, thank you to the residents that were here. Mr. Barowski, the resident that you had that wrote a letter, all the residents that were here today had to state their name and address. Would you be able to share the name for the record? In my opinion, hate does not get to hide behind anonymity. And then furthermore, you told me last weekend that you would be in support of this resolution with a few minor changes that you said you would have to me before today. And I'm truly disappointed with how you've handled the situation.
Anyone else want to be recognized?
Yeah, I want to be recognized.
Yes, Councilman Tansky.
Back to your comments, Councilman Coyle. You called me multiple times, and I tried to work it out with you. I worked out that committee with you, and this can be worked out, too. As far as when I hear letters like that being written, and I have sat over here the same way, back and forth, I don't like that. So I, as a councilman, have to come up with something neutral to try to pull everybody together. I don't want letters written. I don't want hate to go out to somebody, and then somebody come back, hate against them. That's not what I want. So, in my opinion, if we can work something out so everybody's involved, we won't get letters, we won't have to march people up here and command us with different stuff. We can all be together on one resolution. And when you called me, and I respect that you called me, I know, I know what you want, I get it. I tried to tell you that let's pull something for all. So everybody in this city is wanted and to be heard. So we don't have these letters back and forth with the hate, because we don't want that. We want togetherness. Just like, like I said, we go back to that committee. When you brought it forward, it didn't go. I talked to you about it and said, "Let's make some changes so we can get your committee in effect." And we did it. And I believe we can do it again. It doesn't have to be this way. I believe we can do it again.
Does anyone else want to be recognized?
Can I be?
Yes, Councilman Seltzer.
Thank you. Right now, we're getting to a point where we're like being a little bit divisive and this side, that side. The one point I agreed with Councilman Mosley is the urgency of it, having it on whatever, whatever.
Emergency.
Thanks. I've been here for a while. Just lost my tongue on that one. I can understand have it done by the beginning of June, but seeing this turmoil or discussion, not a friendly discussion, would it hurt us to have this into the first meeting of June? It's still in June. And just get it done and resolve where everybody's a happy camper. And I'm speaking from, I've been out with Councilman Mosley when we had the issues on Rodome with the flags. I've walked with him on an evening or two, talking to residents. So it's not, I understand this. It just, I want to see a simple, happy solution for the majority of people. You're not going, "Please, everybody." But maybe in our best decision, maybe it's hold off one meeting till June, and then we have to get it done. It's not discounting the value of this, but it's also trying to make sure it's done properly.
Does anyone else want to be recognized?
Just real quick. Andy, I echo what you said 100%. And I just want to let everybody know that that Belonging Commission, my son sits on that. So I want to know where I stand with everybody. I get involved with everything, and we'll leave it at that. I'll turn it over.
Anyone else?
May I be recognized?
Councilman Barowski.
Councilman Coyle, thank you so much for the call out. This was your resolution. I told you I had something to talk to you about, and you took no time to reach out to me Sunday or Monday. So I'm going to put that on you. So that's out the, you know, out the room. Two, the name you're looking for is Kevin Folger. I believe I had announced it earlier. I don't have his address with me at the moment, but that was his name. And it's funny how just a simple email can represent a difference of opinion means that you're hateful, that you're a bigot. And that's the problem with this resolution. We are nothing but divided up here, especially by language that you've been using tonight, Mr. Coyle. Thank you. That's all of my remarks.
Does anyone else have, would like to be recognized?
May I be recognized?
Yes, Councilman Coyle.
As an adult, when somebody asks you to return a message and you say, "I'll get back to you by the end of Sunday", you get back to that person by the end of Sunday. I shouldn't have to chase you down. And not to bring this up, but our own mayor is the same way. I asked him about this resolution once, no response. Went back to him, then finally got a response. So, and I was appreciative of his response. At least he was honest.
Anyone else have anything? Councilman Seltzer, I guess I'm just looking for a little clarification. You're suggesting of delaying it until June 9th.
Correct.
You're saying to do it properly. Are you referring only to the fact that it is on asking to be adopted on first reading, and you would be more comfortable with a second reading?
More comfortable on a second reading. And hopefully, obviously, we have some differences as we've seen in the last 10, 15 minutes. Maybe we can iron some of these things out where it's a little bit smoother. I think it'd be for the benefit of the audience that came in and talked, for the audience that's on watching us, just for the residents. They benefit everything.
So this is just my own personal opinion. I understand what you're saying about going for a second reading, but I know that Councilman Coyle did share it with all of us, and we all had an opportunity. I had suggestions that he took on some changes from the original, and I believe...
Yes, I also did.
Yeah. And so, that part, I'm just not 100% clear on. I don't know, Mr. Coyle, if you want to share your thoughts.
My thoughts are...
Councilman Coyle.
May I be recognized?
All this simply does is recognize and support the month of June as Pride Month. It isn't requiring anyone to do anything. It doesn't state anything in there about flying the pride flag in city buildings. It doesn't, all it is simply doing is asking City Council, the seven folks sitting here, to recognize and support the month of June as Pride Month. That's all it's doing. So I don't, I don't understand what other discussion there would be. Pride Month is in June. There's, we're not going to change it to make it a fall. We're not going to make it longer. We're not going to make it shorter. It's just recognizing as a city what's already in place. And it's not even city, it's City Council. It's, it's our resolution. So I don't understand what more we would discuss or change. Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes. And then, just to let everybody know, I think it would be helpful to the situation if, after you're finished, that I actually read the resolution into the record.
So that works, because I was just going to read the first line, but I'll let you read the whole thing. I was just going to say the first line literally states, "Whereas the city of Brooklyn supports the rights of every resident to experience equality and freedom from discrimination." It doesn't say LGBTQ in the first line. It literally says "every resident." And so, part of that is recognizing each group. You know, City Council historically has recognized Black History Month. What makes this any different? Has recognized Breast Cancer Awareness Month. What makes that different? Like, that's the question I'm asking the people up here on the City Council. And I get it that Tansky wants to do an all-resolution. That's what he's talking about. But it discounts the groups, and it takes away from the ability, what we did beforehand, where we've done it in the past. Why can't we continue to add to that? That's what I don't, where I'm struggling with, with you, Mr. Tansky.
Let me say, let me say one thing.
Councilman Tansky.
I kind of, shouldn't say I kind of, I do agree with Councilman Mosley. How long has Pride Month been around in June? Do we know? And we thought of this two weeks, three weeks, four weeks before. Now, when that resolution came, if we could have brought this up six months out, or however long out, this would have been ironed out by now. But we didn't. We waited all the way up until the end and throw it on emergency. That's ridiculous. Councilman Mosley's right. He's absolutely right. And I'm not trying to go back and forth with you, because I do want to work something out with you. I always been, tried to work something out. We did with the committee. You've seen what was going on there. You've seen the back and forth and how long that was going on.
And that's what I don't want to happen with here, where you're kicking it, we're kicking it down the road.
But we would have had it, we would have had it, we would have had it done by this time. That's all I'm saying.
May I be recognized again?
Yes, Councilman Coyle.
So that, there are seven people up here. There are six other people that could have brought it up beforehand and did not. So I did bring it up this time. Yes, it's late, and I acknowledged that and talked to each of you about that. But it's a resolution, not an ordinance. It's literally just an acknowledgement of Pride Month in June. If I, if it was a law that we were going to force people to fly the flag outside, heck yeah, it should be three or more, you know, but we're not doing that. It's literally just recognizing June is Pride Month. It's nationally recognized.
May I, may I be recognized?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Mosley.
This is one of the times where I wish that committee of the whole was videotaped. I know we have minutes, but my suggestion was that this should have been introduced prior to today so that, I understand it's a resolution for City Council. I did not know how many people were going to come today. I'm surprised that there's this many. I'm glad to see everybody here. But the whole point of hearing or having another meeting or giving things three meetings is to have the public input. We've had some public input. If we want to wait one more meeting, I could understand that. But this is a resolution for us seven. And if you support the resolution, you support it. And if you support the resolution, you support it, and if you don't, you don't. I'm not sure what's gonna change on the resolution. So we either make a decision to vote today or not. I don't know what delaying it two more media, it's, it's, it'll be past summer recess if we, if we delay this.
Okay, and I'll just add, just because this part wasn't taped, as Councilman Mosley mentioned at Committee of the Whole, that there was some discussion, like I said, about looking to the Belonging, Connecting and Belonging Commission for some of their recommendations. However, the Commission actually got up and running a little bit later than what was anticipated, because the initial meeting was very challenging to schedule because of everyone's schedules. So I do also believe that that's part of what led into not a long lag time. So I'm gonna read the resolution. Recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer slash questioning and plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Brooklyn supports the rights of every resident to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated with equality. And whereas, the Brooklyn City Council is committed to fostering a sense of belonging for all who live, work, and visit our city. And whereas, June 28th, 2025, marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, which marks the birth of the modern-day LGBTQ plus human rights movement, and June is recognized nationally as a special month to celebrate the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer slash questioning and plus LGBTQ plus community. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the LGBTQ plus community, and is an opportunity to become educated, engage in dialogue, strengthen alliances, and build understanding. And whereas, while there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality, members of the LGBTQ plus community continue to face discrimination, intolerance, and hate. And whereas, the City of Brooklyn is committed to supporting and accepting LGBTQ plus individuals, particularly our youth, who compared to their peers are far more likely to experience violence and bullying at school, to suffer from depression, to struggle with substance use, and to have attempted suicide. And whereas, the City of Brooklyn remains vigilant in deterring oppression and discrimination against people on the basis of sex, gender identity, or expression, or sexual orientation. And whereas, by protecting the rights of every individual, we enhance and strengthen the value of everyone throughout society. And whereas, the City of Brooklyn affirms our support for LGBTQ plus residents in our community, and stands with them to protect their civil rights and their ability to live openly, equally, and without fear. And whereas, because the month of June is soon upon us, this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure, and provided it receives the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of council, it shall take effect and be in force immediately. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Brooklyn, County of Cuyahoga, and State of Ohio. Section 1. City Council recognizes and supports the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer slash questioning plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and urges all residents to celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance during this month and every month. Section 2. It is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3. For the reasons stated in the preamble, this resolution is declared an emergency measure, and provided it receives the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of council, it shall take effect and be in force immediately, or otherwise it shall take effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Anyone on council have anything else they'd like to add? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to adopt under suspension of the rules?
Introduced by us to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
No.
Kevin Tansky?
No.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
No.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
No.
Kevin Tansky?
No.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
So that was, uh, four to three, so it's on first reading.
Mrs. Pucci, I'm sorry, may I be recognized?
Yes.
I did not want to be rude. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I do have something with my family. I have to get going.
Yes.
But I wanted to wait for that discussion to get over before I left. I didn't want to walk out.
I understand.
Please excuse me as I have to go. Thank you.
And the mayor did mention that to me before our meeting started. Okay. Ordinance 2025-12, which is on first reading, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance 2024-28, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees' non-bargaining agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Ordinance 2025-13 on first reading, amending Section 1519.04, possession, discharge, I'm sorry, possession, sale, or discharge prohibited, exceptions of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn pertaining to fireworks. And that concludes our legislation. Next, we have our second public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized, and please observe our five-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Barb Politsky, 4795 Tiedemann Road, Brooklyn, Ohio. I've lived here in Brooklyn for over 50 years, and there's been a lot of changes during that time. And someone that I revere greatly, also lived in Brooklyn on Tiedemann Road, and he passed away recently. I went to his wake on Saturday, and I have, even though he was a veteran, he lived, he still did a lot of things for the city, and I'd like to recognize him. On Saturday, May 25th, I attended the wake for longtime resident Regis Barrett. It seems fitting that he went to his rest on the weekend we celebrate Memorial Day to thank those who served our country. As a teenager, Regis served in Korea. He moved from his hometown in Uniontown, PA, to the Cleveland area, and then to Brooklyn in 1979. Regis became engaged in city politics soon after moving to Brooklyn. He volunteered as an auxiliary policeman, was president of the Brooklyn Democratic Club, and councilman from 92 to 1996. I met him in the late 80s, when he knocked on my door with a petition to stop the then-current administration from allowing a giant supermarket called Twin Value from building in the current Plain Dealer property. They did build a mentor in Akron. They boasted of 52 checkout lanes and were open 24 hours, 7 days a week. They were non-union and were picketed by local 880. They opened in 1989 and closed in 1995, leaving large buildings and empty parking lots. Looks like a lot on Memphis Avenue with the old Stop &amp; Shop one stood. Because of the petition, the administration agreed to look for another buyer, and Regis helped to get the Plain Dealer on that property. Regis ran for mayor and lost, but, true to his gentlemanliness, he decided he could be useful in other ways, and became president of the Zoning Board of Appeals. He held that position for 20 years. He also organized and helped run the food bank, told a lot of jokes, walked dogs, and taught people how to fly airplanes. Once he catches up with his parents and 14 siblings, I'm sure he's gonna be asking what he can do up there to help. Rest in peace, Regis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, he's back. Good evening, everyone. I know I'm not getting some answers because the mayor's gone. For the like the 50th time, the Memphis medium, you talk about doing something, stamp concrete or the bricks.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address for the record, please? We need to get that.
I thought I did. Victor Ardito, 4739 Outlook Avenue, no, 7439. That's close. Uh, the Memphis mediums, anything been decided? Been talking about that, and evidently we're gonna do it for a third time, and I asked before, we got a tree we're shaking for the money? I was told it was other money from Matt that was used, but still it was money that could have been used for something else. I heard rumor, they were talking about planting another medium somewhere. I hope you're not, because I asked the mayor before, and he said, "No." If you are, I hope you guys really look it over good and figure it out, because somebody let it leak on how you guys voted for this medium, and most of you did, and that's hilarious. And you went out and bought more expensive traffic lights, and I don't think they're both in yet, to correct the problem that's incorruptible. The Christmas tree, we had a big Christmas tree here last year, which was great, and it was buried where nobody could see it. Are we gonna do another large Christmas tree? If so, is it gonna be like in front of the senior center where people can drive by and enjoy it? And, okay, I go to some of the school meetings, I've never had any children, but I like to go and keep up on some things. Matt's on the board meeting there, whatever. I can't remember what I've seen you there, Matt, to be there in person and get what's going on. Uh, another thing, political correct, which you've been talking about all night long. There's so much political correct stuff nowadays, you're scared to say something, you're gonna get bad, you're gonna get hit, sued, or accosted. So this stuff keeps getting pushed and pushed. Everybody's for everybody, but we have to make something up for everything. And the LED streetlights, I've been talking about those for a couple of weeks now. Uh, so the new ones that are going in this year, Andy, do they have the new bulbs in them with the new arms that you put in next to my house, which is fantastic, and everybody else's side street is dark? I don't recall. I sort of got an answer from the mayor and you, but I wasn't 100% on it, so...
And we can wait till the end of this public session, and then if he is able to answer, he will.
No, it's all my entertainment tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn? Um, I can say one thing about the traffic light. We do, we knew we had to update some of our traffic lights, even apart from the Memphis Avenue project, just so you know, and they're gonna be done in phases. So the change is, we already have the dedicated turn if you're traveling on Memphis heading east, and we're waiting, it's already been ordered for the dedicated turn if you're traveling west. And I don't know, do you want to answer anything on the LED?
I'll start with the Christmas trees.
Okay.
Uh, the Christmas trees, for the last two, three years, there was something that was actually done by the Chamber of Commerce. Last year, we actually, the Chamber did, I'm part of that, was thinking about putting it in front of the senior center, but then the final plan was, since the grand pavilion was still there, they put the big one under the pavilion, and then they had from sponsors, there were about 14 of them, that went up the walkway. It lasted most of the winter, uh, once again, thanks to vandalism from somebody, um, some of the trees got knocked around and everything else. We try to keep them lit as much as possible. With the LED streetlights, we put in for a council budget last year of $55,000, $56,000. The first one, the first streetlight that got replaced or added was a bit off at Century. We had a resident complain about the crosswalk, and Kathy cited a bit off that was dark when somebody turned into it, so we put the first one in there. Hopefully, within the next month, we should be getting streetlights put, attached to existing poles from Glencoe to Delora. Glencoe's gonna be 50 watt. Uh, they're, they're all gonna be short arms, arms. We've learned that time, time and through. They're all gonna be 50 watt LEDs, because already the rest of Glencoe's 50 watt, so at least it's a balanced, it's not gonna mess with your vision. Uh, and then they should get to train more through Delora. Once that's done, that didn't use as much this year. I based, when we came up with an estimate, on the prices they charged us last year, which last year to put up just an arm and a light, the Cobra head, was $14.50. Now they're charging us around $670. So once I get done with that section east of Ridge Road, I've already come up with a list of about 16, 18 other locations throughout Brooklyn, some around the schools by crosswalks elsewhere, where there's some additional lighting needed. And it's, once we're done this year, we'll just keep on going at it. To put a new pole in was originally, pole land light with an arm was originally $4,500, now it's around $2,700. Don't ask me why for the price drop. I'll take it. That answered?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, thank you. Um, Ms. Politsky, very kind words for Regis. And Mr. Ardito, I'm glad that you are attending school board meetings sometimes. I do attend them when I can. My wife works on Tuesdays, because she scheduled off today, so I can be here. I have two small kids. I'm friends with people on the school board. I meet quarterly with the superintendent, and they have a lovely YouTube channel that you can watch all the meetings, and there's minutes on Board Doc, so there's numerous ways that I get my information. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Anyone else on council?
I also want to express my condolences to Regis Barrett's family and his passing. Regis was a formal councilman and a great, kind man. He will be missed. I knew Regis for a long time. We used to talk a lot of union politics. He was very involved with the unions. So was I, my entire life. So again, I just want to express my condolences to him.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be recognized? Um, Mrs. Politsky, thank you. I don't know about everybody else up here. I did not know that Regis passed away. Um, I did know him for 30 years. I served with him. We were executive board and officers for the Democratic Club, and he was very involved. In fact, when I stepped down from being chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals when I was elected to council, he was actually appointed to that vacancy, and as you stated, he was, served there for, I think, about 20 years or so. And I also was not aware that Aaron Bowler had passed away either, so all of council would express our condolences to both families. Okay, uh, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion adjourn. Second.
To adjourn. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone who attended this evening and everyone who spoke.